It is 6:30. We'll call the meeting to order. Agenda amendments. We do have a form from the state on the town road and bridges they certified for design. We'll add that in with highway stuff. And we also have a letter of support through Rowland County, solid waste district. They're looking forward to it. Select ward minutes from January 18th. We have motion to second to discuss and approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 18th, 2022.
Do we have any questions that have arisen that may need to be believed or any other considerations? Hearing none, I'll move the minutes of the 18th. Call in favor, right? Aye. Any opposed?
I was standing together, but I wasn't at the meeting.
The select ward minutes from January 21st. This was a shorter meeting. Do we have a motion, second to discuss and approve?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of January 21st, 2022.
Hearing no comment. Hearing, all in favor, say aye.
There's one way to play.
Okay. So if I'm not upset about moving them.
Pay orders for February 8th. Currently, we're looking at $38,013.16. We are not noting any options to that. Do we have a motion, second to discuss?
I make a motion to accept the pay orders in $38,013.16.
Do we have any questions?
I was curious what that gearbox converting kit was, but since Phil's not here, I didn't get that answered.
Isn't that for the attachment that they got for the, one of the things so they could quick mount, you know, quick mount different things to it?
That's what I was assuming it was.
I don't think they look all over the gearbox converting. I'm just curious a little bit.
Okay. We're all set up? Do we have the $38,013.61, all in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? Sandy, note that there are a couple of audibles in for the month. Number one is Walt here. Was giving assistance to our road crew there when the 214 went down. I would note he's a certified decent mechanic and provides them with quite a bit of information. Also, Steve Drewske, sorry, I'm just lying. Apparently donated blood to the recent blood drive and part of this, he got his picture in the paper. I didn't see it, but that's great. Tree Wardens Rob Barker was awarded a $1,000 canopy grant to purchase some plants and trees here in the village. Any kind of grants we can gather mutually very well accepted. We thank Rob for that. Road Commissioners report. Phil is not here tonight. Basically, the topics that we have are pretty much included in your package. Also, I've added the certificate of compliance. I believe you all have it here on the road and bridge table. This is something we do every year. To my knowledge, I don't believe we've had any changes since last year. So basically, we just need to approve the. Do I have a motion or a second on it? You have the standards in front of you.
Make a motion to approve the town road and bridge standard for the year.
Do we have a second? All in favor, sign.
I have quick questions as I'm trying to do to the process. On page one, under section six, guardrail standards. It's the only thing that's circled now. Is there any reason why everything else is yes and that's no? Is it because we don't have guardrails? I was just wondering.
I can give you an answer. I might write here.
I guess it must be. We don't have any guardrails. How can you remember? We're going to state highways, right? That have, I'm not thinking of town roads that have guardrails. I just wondered if I was hoping you know there's not a, it's not ever done.
I do know that Sandy's been in place for a number of years now. And I know I was always just going ahead and after, I shouldn't have said then. And has that said, I don't think that any changes. If we're all agreement to sign?
Yep.
Okay.
It looks that Sandy's on top of the couple of different reports and grant stuff need to be done by the end of February that you're on top of the road route. The state.
I would note Sandy does mention here too that she notified the guys down in the garage on the possibility that $2,500 safety grant. I don't know if there's anything else we need to check on. Public comments. Anybody here just for comments?
There's, there's.
We're going to do the confirmation next.
Right, so we don't have the public comments now. We wait.
Get off right now.
Yeah.
Debbie, I would say go ahead with this. We have quite a bit of paperwork here from the grant. I think actually we've got a letter in here to Mr. Elder, Esther.
It's a letter of support.
I believe that's what you were looking for, just a letter of support.
That is really like.
Have you had a chance to read it or?
No, I don't see, I worked, I got to work on it. The letter, I mean.
Oh, the, the letter of support.
Yeah.
Yes, I scanned it and attached it.
No, this is the one I know.
Oh, this is the one you wrote? No, I haven't seen it at all.
Yeah, I know it's written. The grant application was very good.
And you know, I've gotten it, I've got a meeting going on, and I've done a conference with the agency for years. And Beachwood one, much smaller. So it's a really, you know, really tiny little lake. And it's, you know, grown and grown in the sand, you know, it's become a real problem. And back in the eighties, we didn't even have retaining walls or anything. Just sand was like dropped out all the time. And now at least we've done something to retaining wall, which is now losing its integrity. But there are other ways to do it besides here, just reinforcing that. And we did the preservation commission, it's like years ago now, put in the rain yard and that helps the water coming down the hill and the driveway. But at this point, you know, we would like somebody to evaluate this for the 3,500, the initial stages, and what are the options for try. I don't think we can do anything about what's in the lake now. But if we can keep more sand going in, the lake will probably turn over and do its normal thing and as long as we don't keep pouring sand on it. So hopefully, we'll come up with some, the grants, we'll come up with some good ideas if the town might want to adopt.
Karen, are you here for that too?
Can I hear something?
On this particular grant, are you here for that too?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Do we need a motion? Do you have any comments?
Yes. No, sorry. The only thing that I'm kind of concerned about is that it's about the Shane and Pickler contacting, I think it was Oliver Pearson, dredging the lake. I've never heard any information about dredging the lake. I know we wanted to do, you know, prevent the erosion and work on that, that aspect, but I don't recall any conversation on dredging the lake. And I know there's a couple of things in the application regarding that, and I'd like to omit that. Even Mr. Pearson, if I'm pronouncing it, said do not do it.
No, that's Oliver. That was Oliver Pearson.
So that's my only concern is I don't like, maybe I'm misinterpreting it, but anything doing with dredging, I would like to omit, but I like the other parts.
Okay. I would not be upset about removing that. Just that we need to ask that question, the consultants that retire, depending when they get this grant. And I think, and it's going to be no, and it doesn't mean you have to do it, and he says, oh, wow, yeah, you really need to do it. It's, I think it would be too extensive then. And according to Oliver Pearson, it wouldn't do any good. And then they made, he gave two scenarios, how you could use it, or why you should dredge. And that was if there were boats that were not able to get by and it's an application anyway, and they can lift. And then he gave another, and he, you know, if that's what you all really want, I take it up.
Look, if this is a question, my opinion.
Yeah, it's a question.
I have award memberships, but I would say. Leave the lake where it is and, you know, don't ask in trouble. I mean, that's, that's my.
I'm 99.9% true, so, yes.
And I would agree with Rose, maybe there's a different way to word that, where you say you're not really considering this possibility, but if it was a recommendation, we would consider it. But I do agree with Rose. It seems like Mr. Pearson says that the lake should not be dredged. And that would cause more damage than would be helpful. So I would say maybe some way to minimize the effect of that, though, take that case in out.
Also, I'll still ask the question of our consultant, but it won't be part of it.
Okay.
So we can take, we can take the whole thing off of that.
You can ask the others, but they, they think, but my opinion was I've never heard any conversation on dredging it. I approve of the aspect of the erosion and helping, you know, doing that. But it sounds like that the proper navigation of procedures that you're asking to be studied in this, that the lake will return to its natural state of its own content. And that we don't need to get overly involved. If we just keep more sand from flowing into the lake, I think that's the big.
Yeah. Yeah, that's my take on it.
Okay.
Nice and warm.
I had already asked for that topic, you know, compared to my first comments, so I'm not going to disagree with you.
So basically, you're, this grant would cover just a survey or a study?
Yes.
Okay, there wouldn't be any actual work done?
No, it will, the work will be some consultant looking at it and giving us ideas and potential prices and.
Do we know if this lady, Amy here, is she going to be involved in any more?
Amy has retired.
She would.
She's gone, she retired.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if she would be retired out as a person?
She has given several, two names, of people she has worked with that are familiar with the bioengineering, the plantings and, and the way the level of the earth should be and sand should be. So, but no, she won't be, unless she wants to come out of retirement.
So I guess at this point, we're in agreement with what they're dealing. I guess then we just need to decide, are we going to sign? I'm assuming, just go ahead and sign the letter of support. We seem to be in agreement on that, so I'd say, I'd say, sign again. I guess I would do it for now.
Will we have the tiny sheet? Yes. Yes.
I believe so.
And we have to have this off by the 11th. The sooner they put it in and change the.
Nobody came from the ARCA, did they?
Yes, first of your.
Oh, Ed looking.
Thank you very much. Thank you guys. Thank you. You just tried to support.
Mission statement? Good night now.
There are two ways to do mission statement. First is for the select ward to present their mission to us. The other way is for us to present the vision to the select ward for approval. Since there is not.
Yeah.
Let me pull it closer to you. It's the reason I took the mask off, you won't hear the other one. There are two ways to do a mission statement. The first is to have the select ward tell us what they feel a mission statement for the ARCA committee should be, and the other approach is to have us put together a mission statement for your approval. We have chosen that second course of action, and in the February meeting, which will be our second meeting, we will agree on a mission statement to present to you for your consideration or approval. Once the mission statement is approved, then we're going to propose for that a communication go out to every citizen of Wallingford, soliciting their advice and opinion concerning how they feel the fund should best be used. When that information is received, we will compare all of the requests and all of the recommendations, including the 18 we have already that were from the select ward, okay? And one of the things that I would recommend we do, and hopefully the committee will approve, is we give our citizens some guidance as to how to think about the use of these funds. Now, what you see over there in those free rates is all the instructions that we've gotten thus far, all 400 and some odd pages of the final ruling. And we can approach that in several ways, but one of the ways it tends to be most effective is we give them a list of points to consider. For instance, it doesn't address an infrastructure problem. And there are options in there for funding personal projects, businesses, but we have just over half a million dollars. And although it sounds like a lot of money, that is going to go very quickly. You can see that already in light of the scale and scope of what has been recommended just with the first 18 that was developed from your data. Secondly, it is really to reduce a public health problem. Now, public health problems come in different flavors. We have issues right here in the town sewer system that need to be addressed. We have problems with the South Wallingford water system that need to be addressed. But public health also includes things like the fact that if we lose power in South Wallingford, nobody can call an ambulance and fire department. So what we would have to do with these recommendations come in is weigh them regarding what their overall importance to the community is, and how best to apportion the funds we're going to have. And that's the recommendations we'll eventually be bringing back to you. Does it serve all three communities, the way our communities are all spread out? For instance, archiving the records here in the town hall, that serves all three communities. But we probably would not be well advised to focus all those resources on town hall, town government, sort of, either. So we'll have to see what comes in. Does it improve public safety? The first aid squad needs new equipment. It's not that expensive, but it helps them in their emergency response. That's the sort of thing we have to consider. And does it benefit the majority of our citizens in all three communities? So those sorts of considerations need to be a part of our evaluation process once these recommendations come in. And then what we, our responsibility as the ARCA committee is to come to you with a series of recommendations, how best to use those funds that services the overall community needs as I just explained in those points. And we have to be able to explain why we're recommending what we're recommending, what order to do, so that we can defend that when we discuss what was recommended and why it was recommended in the community of at large. At that point, then, we're into the summer, and it is your decision as to whether or not you're going to approve the recommendations, or approve some and not others. And you may give us counsel that requires us to go back and reconsider before we come back to the final recommendation. So that's the process that we see going forward. And what we want to do is assure that all the communities have said, that everybody understands why what is recommended is being recommended, but compared to the things that were brought forward that are not recommended. And everything we recommend to you does have to be defendable in the ARCA process itself, so we don't get somebody coming back to us later and saying, I'm sorry, but that really wasn't eligible for that. So that's what we're looking at doing moving forward over the next six months.
Am I right in understanding that they have issued further guidance? And now basically, anything under $10 million, there's no restrictions? So basically, we don't have restrictions?
I have not heard that at all, and I don't see that in any of the documents.
What? There's some, there's still some restrictions. But, but not the original where we said it was?
The interim rule is in the green book, the final rule in the book below. And yes, they did remove and change some guidance, but they didn't just eliminate all Now, what we have to do is make sure that what we recommend to you is in accordance with the final rule, so that it doesn't come back to the community later and somebody says, oh, you shouldn't have done that, and here's why. Now, fortunately, we have great resources on the Rowland Regional Planning Committee who have studied this in great depth. And if we have any questions, that will be the first source we'll return to, to make sure that we're not getting close to the edge in judgment on a particular project. So that's where we stand. And hopefully, we'll have a meeting next week, and hopefully, we'll be in a position to come to you at your next board meeting after that with a proposed mission statement and perhaps guidance, like I just read to you, so that we can move forward with soliciting inputs from our citizens, from our all three communities.
That's good. That's great.
That was the result. Thanks to your leadership in one meeting.
Wow. Awesome.
I know Paige, except that he knows she preferred the select board meeting, you guys' mission statement.
That was preferred, but that's not happening. Now, if the select ward wants to give us a mission statement, we would certainly welcome it. But I think in the interest of time at this point, it might be more time efficient for us to do your mission statement than it's me after hours, and then have you consider it and change it as you see fit. Sometimes it's faster to actually get something to work with and then give it back.
It's always easy to say something.
I prefer to use the word contribute. And any other questions for the ARCA committee?
I think you were a little bit fair to them. Very professional.
It's not my privilege.
I have noted in the Rowland Herald, I've been kind of following along on Rowland's progress on this, and they seem to be looking very closely with what you're laying out here. I did see a couple of surprises that they are still looking at finding a way to take care of their gazebo. I don't think we really have anything that's comparable to that in town currently.
No.
I was just very surprised that they were working through the rules to find a way to fund a couple of projects that I kind of functioned in my own mind as to the general application to what the funds were created for. All the more power to them. If I could get the grader into it, I would in a minute, but I'm sure that you guys are watching pretty much the same thing.
Well, part of our due diligence is to make sure that what we recommend is something that can be defended in the long term. I don't believe, having gone through the entirety of that document, I don't believe that I would want to be the person that goes up and defends that decision in Rowland, the gazebo. I think that's on very shaky ground. But I've not seen the gazebo, I've not seen the project, so. But we've got to make, our, the way we review our role is, we've got to make sure that whatever we recommend is not only from the sense of the community and addressing an objective need of the community, but also something where if you approve a project, nobody's going to come back later and say, oh, yeah, that, that wasn't really well bought out. So I wouldn't want to put it in terms of part of our default roles and responsibilities is to protect you, but part of our fault and responsibilities is to protect you.
I think with the final rule, the way we can calculate loss of revenue has had a lot of flexibility though, too.
Yes.
I think before the final rule, sidewalks were out. I think sidewalks are back in the discussion now.
The only thing I would suggest for that, Sandy, is when you look at the amount of money, and again, it sounds like a lot, but it's not. If I had a choice, just looking at it from the outside, of making sure people in East Wallingford, South Wallingford, could contact emergency services for putting a sidewalk into town, I probably would go with the emergency service. So, you know, when we look at how best to use the funds, if we have a situation here with the sewer plant where we're going to be in real trouble with an exploit if we don't do, say, this or that, that's going to take priority over something else that doesn't have as much of a community impact. Yeah, and we're going to have to really look at these projects in the standpoint of what's the most fair and reasonable for the community overall. Because that's the way it's going to be defended when our citizens come back and say, but I addressed that project here, and why didn't you consider that? Well, we did, but it was number 57, and here's why. You know, and we have to be able to show them the evaluation criteria that is was reasonable and made sense of it, certainly. Hearing none, your ARCA project committee has done it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The tax map maintenance proposal, based on the conference earlier in the year?
No, it's the next one.
Oh, this is the next?
Yeah. Well, we're up to 2023.
I noticed it's quite different from the mine.
Yeah, they did say, they gave us a warning a while ago that this spring would be the same, but next spring would be more out. We were gonna skip in here, remember when we was, we were gonna skip in here, and we didn't, that's why we're kind of getting too, too quickly in a row, yeah.
Yeah. I think we have, we were gonna sign this, though.
Yeah, I moved, signed this agreement for the second year, 2023.
So we're all good on signing? Okay. The public comments I had earlier in the schedule, building for many use of joints. Based, I gather, just Joyce would like to be notified if we decide what we need, sell our money for whatever, things after the mission plan.
I think so. I mean, they've, they've got some projects planned, and they just wanna make sure they know what money's available. I think she read some of the discussions, some of the minutes, you know, some people were saying use the village funds for concessions, which is a good idea, but they should add some earmarks to other things.
Okay. I'm sure we can all bring them. The public works, mutual aid agreement. I think there's, what, three towns that aren't in this?
Yeah.
Clarendon, Pittsfield, and Killenham. Other than that, I think we are resigned into it at one point.
Yeah, she's just, they're just gonna start looking at drafting a new agreement, and they're looking for any input. If you, if you see anything in the existing agreement that you'd like changed, or you have some idea for the new agreement that you'd like to see in there.
Okay. I don't think we are gonna take any action on that, Sam.
No, if anybody has, you know, any input, we wanna email man who's bored of this.
And a public records policy.
It comes back again. Yep. My comment is, oh, are we asking about any questions or comments? Why aren't we stating any costs for the copies in here? We said, we say whatever the state copy is, but if I were just coming in here and somebody handed me this, how do I know what the state copy fee is? Is it part of this document? Is there gonna be a sign there?
There is a sign right next to the copy of what these are. So I think this is what Julie wants to do as far as, she's just gonna go by state so that if state changes, it'll go along with that.
Okay, I just.
No questions to that.
Yeah. Because I thought originally they had all different prices for, like a pump drive, and they had all different prices. Yeah, this looks, you guys worked on it, great game.
Yeah. Julie wants to look at it.
Did you make one thing in there?
Yes. The record request will go through the rule first.
Good.
So there's a motion?
Yeah.
So I make a motion to adopt the poll awareness policy in Wallingford. And did I think you said the date should last first?
Wait a second.
I don't, we have a date mentioned, but this.
Did you want to date say?
No, I don't, I'm, I'm here to, I mean, where do I?
Yeah, so it's left in the media.
Yeah.
Well, that's the date here, oh, well, no, maybe not, because this date we adopted it is effective as of this date. Okay.
So what do you think?
Now, okay. I second it.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. The second meeting in February is scheduled for the 21st. Sam may not be here. It is President's Day, and we want to have it on the 2nd, the 22nd, or whatever. It would be Tuesday instead of Monday.
I'm heading to the front. Yeah, we're boring.
Good, we're Tuesday.
I'll, I'll find it this time.
I think you also have the letter to the agricultural department recommending, or some letter of support for the solid waste district here. We just need either approval, do you have a motion to approve or reject the truth?
I make a motion.
Go second, say aye. All in favor, aye.
Oh, I forgot, the week of February 21st is, is, it's school vacation, and my brother just texted me today, my father's house is gonna be sold, and it looks like we might have an awful lot if I'm gonna talk to him about it tomorrow night. What this means is that I might be gone beginning of this week. So if you're fine meeting without me on the, I might not be, I might be back by the 22nd, because if we went down, say on Friday, I just don't know how much we have to have out of the house, how rapid it's gonna be, it's gone and blocked. So if you're okay, I might not be able to attend the meeting on the 22nd. I just thought about it. It's all, it's all just moving on.
The other thing I really have here is the, it is about the ropes and boys over Lake Elk, and I assume that you're working on where we're gonna purchase that at?
Yep, in an order.
Okay. So I take the rope, okay?
Yep, and I got, I've got some prices from dock doctors and another place in Hurtland for docks. So maybe next year, coming up, we'll look at those.
That's gonna be the big one?
Yeah, it's gonna be around $5,000, if we go over the 10 by 10.
Oh, ouch.
Yep.
Did you still keep the meeting up February 22nd?
Yep.
Okay then. I think so.
Thank you.
Kind of odd thing to mention right now, traditionally, we have a meeting the night before the town meeting, just so you remember that it's happening.
But we need a school.
No, it's a short one.
No, it's not.
Oh, no, don't listen to me. I'm talking. It's on the stage, girl.
Good.
Hey. Who am I, each thing?
We have a motion to say you're going?
I make a motion to adjourn. I second.
All in favor, aye.